Okay, call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge.
Okay, thanks.
President Trump.
President.
Secretary of Special Counsel Welker is on Hawaii I assume?
I imagine so.
Uh, trustee Warren.
Yeah.
Trustee Calhoun.
Present.
Trustee Harwitz.
Here.
Don't we have a corn present this afternoon?
Okay, great. So, welcome to the special, the work session for the town of Southampton trustees. Uh, we have on the, on the agenda, a discussion from Dr. Allison Branko from the Nature Conservancy, but Mrs. Welker's not here yet, so I would imagine that she would want to wait for that a little bit, okay? So, skip that. So, we'll go right into, Scott's got something on the iconic bay keeper mooring permit?
Uh, yeah. Actually, we have a request from the iconic bay keeper. Um, I believe we've done this in the past. It's to, um, it's for Peter Topping. He wants us to waive the fee with iconic bay keeper boat. I know we've done this, so I just wanted to get the board's, uh, opinion for the 167 Red Creek Road mooring location.
Right. We have done it in the past, so.
It's okay?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
I'm fine with it.
He's got all the paperwork here. It's all in order. It's, you know, iconic bay keeper, we've always supported and worked well with and.
Scott, you, uh, he, he had, uh, applied for some permits for agriculture in Cold Springs Pond, and, um, we had given him some permission. Is there any chance of having, uh, him come in and give us an update for what he, what he accomplished in 2019 and 2020, the plan going moving forward?
I'm sure he would absolutely love to.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Be good for the education of the public.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to him. I'm sure he would absolutely love to do that. I know they like to take every opportunity to address the board and address the public, obviously. I mean, today on the work session, I just wanted to deal with the mooring application, but I'll certainly reach out and we'll see if we can work that out.
Sure, great.
All right.
Great.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we can find out what other projects he's doing in the area.
Absolutely.
Yeah, great.
I'll take care of it.
We skipped the handout a little bit, waiting for you.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Only be a couple of minutes. Okay, would you like to come up with Branko and give your presentation?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you today. Um, I'm hoping that today will just be sort of the beginning of a conversation that we can continue to have. Um, and given that you're in this temporary room, I brought some handouts. I hope that's okay?
Director, could you please, um, identify yourself as a director?
I can, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Allison Branko. I'm the Director of Coastal Programs for the Nature Conservancy in New York.
Thank you so much.
Um, and I will, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Um, so, I'm here really to talk about, um, what I think is an issue that everyone and no one more than the trustees probably is experiencing and hearing about every single day, which is sea level rise and the impact it's having on Long Island. Um, and what I have given you in this handout, the one with sort of an upside down triangle, is the perspective that I'm hoping, um, all of Long Islanders will at least consider as they deal both with day-to-day decisions on coastal management, as well as kind of more big picture planning issues. Um, and I think the trustees are really uniquely positioned to help not only with the day-to-day, but really bring this issue to the forefront with the rest of the town, the citizens of the town, as well as the government of the town, and say, "This is really an issue. We're dealing with these questions every single day, and we need to start doing some more big picture planning as well as just dealing with these applications that come to us and every individual person's issues on the shoreline." Um, and what I really think that we need to do is remember that we all live here on Long Island because we love nature and we love the ocean and the coast. I know that's probably why all of you became trustees in the first place. Um, so what we really need to do is get back to a time where we had nature and a natural shoreline between the people and the dangers of the ocean to sort of not only protect ourselves, but then also protect all those things that we love about the coast, the beaches, fishing, all of those things. And so, first and foremost, that means not putting new people in harm's way in the flood zone. And then, after that, it's dealing with all of the development that we've already done in the flood zone. And that's everything from roads and infrastructure, homes, seawalls, all of those things. Um, and what I've presented on that paper that I've given you is sort of a decision hierarchy, you might call it. So, every time you're presented with a decision, I would encourage you to say, "Can we first and foremost prevent making this problem worse?" And then, if it's already a problem, then we sort of go down the list. And can we get this infrastructure out of the way? Can we protect these people, make people safer, keep nature between us and the water? Um, and then if not, can we make our infrastructure more resilient so that we can withstand all of this water that's coming in? And we're dealing not just with more rain, we're dealing with bigger, stronger hurricanes and coastal storms, nor'easters, happening more frequently. And then, in addition to that, we're dealing with the much slower but permanent rise of sea level, which I think, you know, we are really at that point where that, that sort of exponential curve of sea level rise that we, I'm sure we're all familiar with, it's really starting to accelerate to the point that it's impacting people day-to-day. Um, and the other issue with sea level rise is that it's not just making the ocean rise, but it's pushing our groundwater up. So, all of the homes that have basements are starting to experience more and more flooding in basements. We're having a lot of problems with our road drainage infrastructure not working the way it was designed because groundwater is higher than it once was, and the sea level as well is where it's draining to is higher than it once was. So, it's, it's a whole host of problems, and I think everyone can point to a few neighborhoods around Southampton where this is really a dire situation already, and unfortunately, that will just become more and more frequent. And it's, it's not an everyday problem in most places right now, but it's an occasional problem. Maybe it's just on the spring tides, and then soon it will be every high tide, and then soon it will be more permanent. Um, so I think what I'm really hoping is that the trustees can help sort of raise this issue to the forefront with everyone in town, talk about how often you're getting applications for, "My bulkhead fell down. My beach is eroding. We need to do sand replenishment," all of these things, because you guys are sort of on the front lines of making all these decisions. Um, talk about how that's happening more and more often, and it's a bigger and bigger problem, and help us sort of raise everybody's interest and willingness to start talking about kind of the bigger picture, harder decisions of, of how to make Southampton thrive really in the long term in the face of what's going to be a very different coast over the next 50 years. And I want you to know too that, um, the Nature Conservancy, myself personally, as well as I have a whole team across the state, um, we're really here to be a resource to you, to help you talk through some of the options, if you need some examples of what has happened in other places that you might want to look at, if you need a presentation to a homeowner's organization or a group of folks, just to give them some general information about these kind of things, please do reach out to us. Um, we do really want to be a useful resource hopefully to all of you.
Do you have any literature as far as, you know, sea level rising, how it pertains to, uh, the bulkheads being heightened? The height of the bulkhead, the New York State DEC has been going with 18 inches. Our bo, our board is wrangled with it back and forth because we usually go, uh, the next adjoining property higher, so everything is, everybody has the same amount of protection. We've had at least one public hearing on 18 inches from a property owner that we voted on and basically, uh, you know, approved it. But do you have any literature as far as, you know, the raising of the bulkheads and what it could do to the environment? Because, uh, one of the consultants gave us a very extensive presentation on sea level rise, and I believe that it was up to 30 inches within 15 years. Do you have any science or anybody that, uh, that works for your agency that could come in and give us a, you know, another, uh, a scientific side of it?
Yes, absolutely. I'd be more than happy to do that. I think there's a few, so there are a few issues. So, certainly I can come and talk more about what the sea level rise projections say and given timeframes with, if we fix our global warming problem and if we don't, and what that's going to look like. Um, but then there's a whole nother issue about the seawall is not going to stop the flooding. So, I think it's important that we, and, and you guys have a great opportunity actually to just educate people about that, because a lot of people just don't really know as much as you all do about how the coastline works. Um, but absolutely, I'm happy to help provide you with some good, there is really good science now about the sea level rise changes that we're expecting to see, how fast we're expecting it to rise, um, to kind of help you with making those decisions, but also to remember that, you know, a vertical sea level rise of however many inches it is means a really, a pretty big change inland of where the water is trying to get to. And the bulkhead may stop erosion at least some of the time, but it's not going to stop the ocean. It's going to come up under, around, and I think it's really important to always remind homeowners of that, so that even if they still want to ask for their seawall, at least they know what they are and aren't going to get from it. And you have a really great opportunity to kind of help educate those folks, and I'm, I'm happy to, to help you come up with some good, good information, maybe a, a fact sheet or something that we can use to help teach people more about that, and definitely to talk more about the specific projections.
We have enlisted, uh, Robert Young. He was up here last week.
Great, that's great.
And we looked at some of the areas and questioned.
Yeah, I saw he had some photos from here.
You know, a very interesting comment that he made, percentage-wise, I believe, our area is the highest amount, percentage of water rise on the coast.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're really in a hotspot for, you know, the global sea level rise is one thing, but here in New York, and it's in particular in New York City and Long Island, it's much worse than the global average, actually.
Would you have some information on that also?
Absolutely, yeah.
I would love to see that.
Yep, I'd be happy to get that to you.
Yeah, with concern about the raising of the bulkheads reducing flood plain.
Right, yeah, and, you know, eventually it eliminates the flood plain entirely.
And how it impacts people that are on the same creek that don't have hard structures.
Right, yeah, absolutely. You know, I always try to remind people that, you know, while erosion might be a problem, depending on what you have behind the shoreline, in general, erosion is not a problem to be solved. It's a natural process, and whatever sand leaves here is needed somewhere else to build a beach or feed a salt marsh or make seagrass habitat. So, it's important to always remember that, you know, unfortunately, your role is to make decisions on this property only and then this property only, but I think we, we need some kind of bigger picture, more regional solutions, because if we just keep this arms race of bulkheads, we're really going to be in trouble.
So, have you, have you, um, had any opportunity to address folks from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation? Because, you know, you talk about, you know, this regional approach, and when they're issuing permits that allow up to an 18-inch increase, and the reality is that, you know, the folks have to get permits from all the regulatory authorities. So, now we get put against them to say, "Hey, well, you guys don't want to give us, you know, what the state has given us," and then we end up in a situation. But it doesn't make any sense, because we should all be working together towards the same goal to make decisions that, you know, are in the best interest of the coastal resiliency and that are going to, you know, that doesn't make any sense. Why are we all not working on the same page?
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I mean, I, I can't really speak, speak to why the DEC isn't doing more, but I will tell you, the conversation there has changed a lot over the last five years or so. I think, you know, this governor is really hot on this coastal issue. In particular, this time around, he's done this big bond act now, which has a, in theory, will have a lot of money being put to resiliency projects and issues. And I think that's been a signal to the DEC that they, that it's not business as usual anymore. You know, they put out some guidance for living shorelines, so at least that's a possible thing for people to do now. I think there's more work to be done there. Um, it's not really incentivized as much as I'd like to see it, but at least it's possible for a homeowner who really wants to do the right thing. And so, you know, it's baby steps, but there has been some progress there, and I do think that there's room, especially in the coming couple of years, to work with them, you know, because you're, you, you guys are not the only ones facing this issue with the DEC, and I think even just bringing the, the three towns that have trustees that have that really acute experience, bringing you all together to talk to the DEC about it would be such a, like a seemingly small step that could make a big impact.
Yeah, it, it seems that it shouldn't be that difficult to be able to take that approach and say, "All right, listen, here's what makes sense for this area based on, you know, the topography, you know, what have you, and then, you know, good policy decisions can be made that will work regionally versus putting one regulatory authority against another and putting the applicant in the middle," and it, it's really not, it's not good.
No, and it creates an impossible position both for you folks and for the applicant, because they don't really know what to do. They're not getting all the best information always, and, you know, they're, they're not sure which regulatory agency to listen to.
Who's permit are we going to violate?
Right, yeah, exactly. Right.
Or the, or the projects sit in limbo for a long time, and I, I don't think it should be that hard for us all to get on the same page and respect, you know, what everybody's trying to protect and, and do the right job.
Yeah, and I will just let you know, I'm sure you probably all know this already, but the county legislator Krebsky has proposed a new task force, so for, at least for Suffolk County, to sort of bring everyone together that's dealing with these issues across Suffolk County. And I think that could be a great venue to then address the state on some of these issues, kind of jointly as everybody in Suffolk County.
Oh, good. If there's anybody that's up on that, he would be, because he was the former president of the South Old Trustees.
Exactly.
Are you familiar with the Chinacock Nation and their shoreline resiliency project that they did a couple of years ago?
Yeah, it's so interesting, because until that happened, no one was really doing living shorelines on Long Island because it was so difficult to get a permit for such a thing, and because they didn't need one, because they were a reservation, they were able to just do it, and it was a perfect showcase to say, "Look, everything is fine. It worked, and we've learned a lot from it." It, that helped change the conversation a lot, actually.
Yeah, this board advocated for the dredge material to be placed on that beach, so we were part of the whole conversation with Cornell. And it is the biggest, you know, shoreline resilience, resiliency project that I know of or probably, or in the state.
Yeah.
So, and it's kind of a, nice to see, I'm a commercial fisherman on Chinacock Bay, looking at the beach in more of a natural state instead of the rock and cobble and all the other stuff that they had put in front of the cemetery to protect their property.
Right.
So, there, there are other mechanisms that can be used other than hardening structures.
There sure are, and the fact is, you know, the hardened structures fix some problems, make other problems worse, and, you know, even for the problems they help with, it helps right up until a point, until it fails, sometimes catastrophically. And that's not good for anybody, even the homeowner. So, I think, you know, if we're willing to give up a little bit, make a little room for the water, and create a more natural shoreline that is naturally very resilient and can take all the punishment of the ocean as long as we're just kind of out of its way.
What are some of your thoughts on the incentives for living shorelines?
I think we need some. We don't really have any right now. It's actually, from stories I hear, so I've never applied for a permit for a living shoreline, but stories I hear from homeowners that have say that it's much harder to get a permit for a living shoreline than for a bulkhead. And, you know, that's just part of the growing pains, I think, of this new thing for the DEC. But, you know, as they become more common and more and more contractors are familiar with them and know how to do them and know how to work the permitting system, hopefully that will get better. But that would be, that would be a first incentive, because permitting is always everyone's biggest hurdle. So, if they could really help on the permit side, make it easier for a living shoreline permit than a bulkhead permit, for example, that would be a great incentive in and of itself.
Yeah, living shorelines are much different than a rock revetment or a bulkhead. Normally, that's at the top of the high tide mark, the bulkhead or the structure. Living shorelines, the one that we worked on in West Hampton, literally actually went into the water where there would be rocks placed there to break up the wave energy, and then there would be replantings and revegetation. So, it was, you know, it wasn't just a 18-inch bulkhead, you know, parallel.
Right.
It was a, you know, a well-bought-out design plan that would protect the shoreline behind whatever structures were placed there.
Right, and I, and I do want to just always remind everybody, a living shoreline is a bazillion times better than a rock revetment or a hard seawall, but it's not the same as a natural shoreline, and I think we always need to remember that. So, there are a lot of situations where we can't just go back to a natural shoreline because we will wash away some really valuable infrastructure, and in those cases, that's where we want to try to build living shorelines. If the physics allows, we should always be trying to do that. But I think we also want to remember, we have a lot of opportunities where it's kind of our instinct to, to build the wall because we want to, you know, keep every acre of grass we always had, or whatever it is. But in places where there is room, where your house is not in danger, for example, maybe you do leave a little bit of space and don't build a living shoreline or a wall, and let that natural ecosystem evolve, let the salt marsh encroach on your lawn a little bit. So, I think we want to always be asking people that too, and sometimes the answer is, "No, that's not possible," and that's okay. But we always have to start with, "Could we do that?" And then only if the answer is no, then do we kind of go down that list? And that's why we created this sort of hierarchy concept that we kind of want everyone to just consider whenever they're making these decisions, to sort of go through, natural, real nature is best, and then we want to get as close to it as we can, kind of going down the list.
Yeah, it's kind of ironic after Sandy that, uh, when the tide receded, there were multiple bulkheads in Chinacock Bay that literally toppled over, and then when the tide was low in the afternoon after Sandy went by, you went, any marsh, natural marsh system that was there, you, was not compromised at all. You would never even know that there was hurricane.
Right.
Other than the debris that was put on that, you know, area.
Exactly, because they evolved in an ecosystem with hurricanes, and so they're adapted to, to take all that punishment. And they actually, you know, they won't stop a storm surge from flooding things, but they do break down that wave energy coming in a great deal and protect whatever homes and people are behind them. And so, you know, the more, the more walls we build, the fewer salt marshes we'll have, and then we won't have that natural protective rim around our coastline anymore.
Just circling back to bulkheads for a second, if you had anything that you in the future perhaps could come back and present along the lines of water modeling for when a bulkhead, if a bulkhead were to be raised at maybe a couple different heights, perhaps not up to the 18 inches that the DEC does permit, but, um, particularly looking at the effects on the adjoining properties who don't have that rise.
Yeah, I mean, so, it, it is a tricky thing. There's not a lot of great, because every, every situation where a bulkhead is built is physically very different. There's not a lot of great sort of generic models that can show what happens. But it is well-known that those hardened structures reflect a lot of that wave energy, and everyone can think of an example where they know a bulkhead and a tremendous amount of erosion right at the end of it. And what happens is people either wind up wrapping them around, or the neighbor didn't have one, but then they needed to get one to protect themselves from the erosion caused by the neighboring bulkhead. Um, and that's, I would say, for folks like you who are making these regulatory determinations when people are asking for a bulkhead, that's, that's the biggest challenge. It's very difficult to quantify the impact of the bulkhead on creating the erosion versus all of the other factors. And I think, I, I don't think I could come up with any quantitative information to help you sort of lay blame, I would say, because I know that sometimes homeowners do hope to do that. Um, but I will say, uh, once you get one, you often see more because they exacerbate erosion elsewhere, and I think, which is why we always need to think, you know, "This is my property boundary, and I always have to protect it." We have to think, "Is there really something valuable to me in danger?" Or is it just, I think that's where the line on the map should be. Unfortunately, you know, we do all our land use based on lines on flat maps, and we're just not living in a static world anymore. That line is just continually marching closer and closer to us. So, I think we have to kind of rethink our regulations.
Realistically, I mean, a lot of what we work on, you know, we have these things that were cottages, you know, back in the 50s or 60s.
Absolutely.
Now, then they were summertime cottages, and now they're, you know, regular full-time resident homes. They're, they're on these, these canals, you know, they're, they're, they're all bulkheaded. They're going to be bulkheaded. They're very small pieces of land, so there's no way you're going to eliminate those bulkheads.
Right.
You'll, you'll destroy the entire community. It's not going to work. So, you know, they're all trying to protect their properties, and sometimes it makes sense, in my opinion, when you're looking at some of these tight-knit communities where you have to allow them to increase their elevations to match the, you know, adjoining, and their houses are higher and whatever. So, I hear what you're saying, but sometimes when you actually look at the situations in these communities, it's the best option that there is for these people.
Right, and, and there are certainly many properties where there aren't a lot of other options than something hardened. And I think, and canals are an even trickier one, because often they're so narrow that there's not even space to do a living shoreline, even if, you know, because they're very protected. It would off, it would typically be a good spot for it, but usually to do it on both sides, you would fill the whole canal, basically.
We're the victims of all the land use decisions that were made 50, 60 years ago.
It's absolutely true.
So, we're trying to just do the best that we can at preserving, you know, what's there, and you just, you know, so much you can do, and that's it.
Right.
The canals never had shorelines in the first place because they were dredged out of dry land.
Exactly, right. Yeah, they were created.
Or done out.
Yeah, exactly.
What, how do you feel about cubes along the ocean beach?
About cubes?
Yeah.
Like sandbags sort of cubes?
Do you?
Do you textile structures?
I mean, it's better than a wall wall, but it's just barely, slightly, a little bit above, is the real answer. I mean, unfortunately, we're in this situation where we made all these land use decisions where we didn't realize that the coastline was changing, and now we're at this point where we have to make all these emergency repairs all the time. And I think it's okay to do that because we are in this emergency situation, but the fact, the fact is, we can't just do that. We can't, we can't consciously decide to not do anything else and just continue this hamster wheel of emergency repairs. So, if we need to put in something temporary to keep things from falling in the ocean, that's fine, but only if we also start making a better plan, which is back up and make room for the water, because it's going to come whether we like it or not.
Sooner or later.
What's that?
Sooner or later.
Sooner or later, and, you know, unfortunately, it's really hard to know exactly when as well, because it's not, you know, the, the sea level we can predict, but the storms we can't, and that's when the big changes really happen.
And that's why you had called up Dr. Young to come up here and discuss it, so, so we can have some future discussions with Marty Shay and Janashir of Land Use where our jurisdictions interact, so we come up with a clear-cut plan throughout the entire town.
That's great, and I hope you'll consider this hierarchy as a way to kind of frame that plan, because I think, you know, Southampton is really lucky compared to a lot of other places dealing with these issues, that you have a huge pot of money for land purchases that other places don't have. And, you know, there are some people who want out, whose lives are already being so impacted, and I think, you know, there's room, there are plenty of other things to spend CPF funding on, of course, but you sort of already have the ability to do this, whereas a lot of other folks don't until the fed, until there's a disaster and the federal government comes in. But you guys don't have to wait that long. So, even to just start chipping away at it would be a huge deal, and so I'm thrilled to hear that you're talking about it.
Yeah, and I think the federal government's going to come in with a FIMS plan, uh, 2021, uh, so maybe we'll get some beach nourishment on some of the areas, but that's only going to be a temporary solution.
That's exactly right. It's a Band-Aid for now.
And it'll buy us time to come up with a better approach.
Exactly, right.
A holistic approach.
Yes, and that's okay to buy ourselves time, but the fact is, everybody's waiting for FIMP, and nobody's really starting to think about the long-term plan, because, you know, those are hard conversations to have, and it's going to take a long time, so we need to get started.
Right.
It's been six, sixty years for FIMP.
Sixty years, yeah, exactly. And that's just for the temporary solution.
Yes.
Scott was talking about the zoning problems that we face there. I mean, it's too bad that when Supervisor Hulse back in the 70s introduced a resolution before the town board to limit the size of houses on the dills to just a small house there, he was, he was defeated. If that would, hadn't gone through, it wouldn't be all these heroic efforts.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, and it, and it's not just us.
There was some people who were thinking ahead back in those days.
There sure were, yeah. They just sort of got shouted down, unfortunately, and now we're paying for it.
We're dealing with it.
Yeah.
We're dealing with this in many different aspects, you know, and that's all we can do.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to talking to you in the future.
Yeah, me too.
All right, so I guess we go into general permit application determination. The first one is Bonnie Cohen Coring, yeah, on Seventeen Pine Lane in West Hampton. Come on up.
Hello.
Okay.
Hello.
Yeah, your name and for the record.
Scott Moses, bulkhead permits by Gary.
All right, so we discussed this last time on handling this one, with Ann's permit originally, taking over her area. I went down and took a look at the site and, um, just like that, go to the board for a second on this. As you can see, I did a little bit of digging in the past. This bulkhead, this particular bulkhead was actually raised years ago when it was replaced, when it replaced an old creosote bulkhead, and then the, the property to the north raised theirs back about 15, 15 years ago, raised it to meet that. So, they've actually raised it up about 18 inches in the past. As you can see, there's grass right up to the bulkhead. Um, so, there's not a real big erosion problem down there. It would be evidenced if the grass was all torn up and it was, you know.
Salt water would kill it.
Salt water would kill it all off. It's, it's doing well, and, um, unfortunately, it's doing well. It means it's fertilized. But, um, the property to the north is exactly the same height as the, as the two properties to the north, their bulkheads, and the property to the south, it's about, uh, two to four inches. At this point where this, this cut is, this is about two to four inches higher. And these properties out on the point actually have lower bulk, lower bulkheads than this one and have the same grass situations going right out to the edge with no visible erosion. So, uh, I can't support raising it at all. I would say, uh, replace in kind and place at the same height. And a buffer zone, uh, what have you been, what have you been recommending these days? 10-foot?
Yeah, they have a buffer, I mean, would you in there already?
Okay.
Eric, the property, the topography of the property behind it, is it slightly or is it completely flat? So.
Very slightly.
So, raising it even four inches, would that help keep the sheet run off? So, basically, on an extreme high tide, the water would come and go and not puddle and pond on the property.
Well, I think if you had, you have no fertilized vegetation. I'm talking about putting some kind of buffer in there, beach grass or something like that, that it would absorb.
No, in the description, um, they, I believe it's a native, it's a native vegetation.
Yeah, that's what I want to propose on it.
And, and all the bulkheads and all the properties are the same height, so if you got a severe storm, each one would incur the same amount of damage.
Yes, yes.
So, they wouldn't, by raising it, it might create an issue, so.
Yeah, it's not going to, if you kept it the same, it's not going to affect anybody else. Maintain the status quo throughout the whole point, this is basically. Maintain the status quo throughout the whole point, it's basically all about the same size.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, so basically, in terms of raising the height of the bulkhead, um, the homeowner just wants to comply. They're pretty hard to, they're pretty hot to get started, so.
If they wanna keep it at the same level, it's fine then.
Yeah, I called them last week after the meeting. He said obviously he'd prefer to raise it, because, what you just discussed, but if.
Clearly no reason to.
Yeah, but he said he, he's kinda hot to get going to.
You'd only be raising it on the property directly in front of the house, the water would go around it and flood it anyhow. That's, that's what we've learned with these bulkheads being raised. Unless you do the whole entire stretch and then raise the bulkhead and the elevation behind it, and the property is elevated, it's okay. But when it's flat like this, you're basically gonna have all that water pitched towards that house, so you're gonna get a ponding effect on it between the bu, the bulkhead that has been raised and the new material is gonna run landward.
Well, it's gonna seek its own level. It's gonna come around the other sides who haven't raised that bulkhead, so you're really defeating the purpose.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no, the only reason why you. Go ahead.
Yeah.
That could cause more trouble in the long run.
There's, there's also minimal wave energy here. Um, it's about a two hundred foot width across to the other shoreline, and there's, um, there's salt marsh on the other shoreline, which will absorb some of the wave energy. So just further supporting, um, the keeping of the bulkhead at that height.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you have to straighten out the fences on the ends, they have to, have to be, uh, gates.
The fences, so?
The fences are fixed right now, so they have to be, pass and repass.
You need a five-foot passing line.
Because the, the whole rationale was is that, uh, the public has the right to pass between the high and low water mark by putting a bulkhead in. You've eliminated that possibility now, so it has to be swinging gates on there to, in case someone has to get along with.
I see, so they have to be swinging gates on both sides of the bulkhead?
Yes.
Alright, that's gonna, you gotta change this application, because you have a lot of fill coming in on this application, so you're gonna have to tweak the fill.
Tweak the applica, uh, excuse me.
Yeah, because you can't have a lot of fill coming in there now, because that's gonna change things.
Yeah, no, no additional fill. He's gotta take out, uh, at least a foot deep.
Right.
Yeah.
Like, because that's gonna, that's gonna be problematic, so you're gonna have to adjust the fill calculations on that.
Well, the fill would need to be clean sand to put in the buffer. Right now, the, the fill that's in the buffer is, you know, topsoil, so you wanna replace
one of the materials for the other.
There's a lot more fill here. You're talking all the dredge fill.
Yeah, there's not gonna be any more.
Right.
No, no, no fill, that's gonna be, it's gonna have to be actually soil taken out.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna have to, you're not gonna plant the beach grass or any native vegetation in that particular soil. And we want lighter soil anyway to absorb, you know, to filter it out.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so in terms of the dredging, is it just simply, well, especially now they're not, they're not raising the bulkhead, it's just simply too much, or?
Well, the dredging can still be done, but it has to be trucked off-site.
Yes.
Trucked off-site.
Yeah.
To a certified landfill, right?
It's not usually, we're not allowing dredging, it's fixed in reclamation of the, of the, of the soils that have been lost through the holes in the bulkhead and, you know, filled in in front of the bulkhead.
Right, he's got a quantified cubic yardage limit on there.
That's right.
Yeah, I did two different calculations, so one is the current one, I just updated as per your recommendation. As you suggested, it's quite a lot. So as it is right now, which is sounding like.
Well, you don't really think that you really need to excavate in front of the bulkhead, do you?
Um, it's something we typically put in for, but if, I'm happy to hear your recommendations.
You know, this, this large stretch of bulkhead, two hundred and forty-five feet, I mean, you're not gonna put, uh, uh, a vessel in front of them, fill the whole thing up with vessels, you only need one little spot if you need to get a, a boat right up next to the bulkhead.
Okay, originally I was gonna propose I cut it in half, it's as opposed to ten feet seaward. But you, you're saying just maybe towards a section where there's the, the proposed boat slip, kinda call it quits?
We would need to excavate.
Yeah, just, just within the boat, in the boat slip.
Yeah, well, well, he's gonna need, he's gonna need fill, fill this in, because he's gonna force this off.
Yeah, just off-site.
So he's gonna need fill to fill that back in.
Yeah, the boat slip's going away, correct?
Yeah, so you can use some of that.
There's currently no boat slip there.
And so you're, you're creating a boat slip.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so you have, so you have more fill.
Yeah, so you have to remove that, and you wanna dredge ten feet outside of it, so you have a, the ability to get in and out of the boat slip.
Correct.
Make it a short channel.
So basically, just what I'm taking away is we should try to really limit the seaward dredging to ten feet in front of the proposed boat slip?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, just in that vicinity.
Yeah.
Okay. I think if we're not reducing that.
You don't need anything along there, just leave everything the way it is. You're gonna have to take the soil out at least a foot, ten foot back from the shore, from the face of the bulkhead and replant it with native vegetation. And, uh, that's gonna be taken off-site. That, that heavy soil is there.
And, and the clean fill would replace it?
Clean fill, yeah.
Clean sand, something that is permanent, of course.
Okay.
Okay, and the height of the bulkhead the same, and repine, re, uh, in kind and place.
In kind and place.
Yeah.
Alright, I don't think the applicant will have an issue with that, since they're all pretty happy to comply.
Alright, so everybody's good with that on deck for, uh. So next meeting.
Fine with it.
Do we need an updated cover sheet out?
Yeah, we're gonna need all that information before we put it on, so we need that before Monday.
Yeah. I have a really basic question on the cover sheet. Could I just write C attached, or do you want me to cram it into the little, the small box?
How do you want it for, uh, clerical purposes?
Um, we usually like it on that.
On there?
But if you guys are willing to accept it, separate sheet.
Well, no, I think we should.
I don't want you to start deviating from what you usually do.
The Bay constables take, the Bay constables are the ones who do the inspections for us, to have consistency. I think we should keep it as we have been doing.
Of course, yes, yes.
I'm aware.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting and, uh.
Your next meeting's on Monday, I believe?
Yeah. Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, well, thanks a lot for your help.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is Richard Hassan. It's a, yeah, First Renewal, Twenty-four Dune Lane in West Hampton Dunes. Did you review this the first time? You wanna talk about it?
Uh, this is a renewal for, um, the reconstruction of an existing bulkhead, ninety-one feet, uh, in length. Um, two sections of it will be low sill to allow for, um, double seawall and, um, very, the, there's a substantial buffer of ten feet, and any vegetation that's been disturbed shall be restored in kind and in place.
No changes to the original application?
Um, there are no changes to the original application.
Okay, so you're good with, uh, moving forward, so move that forward to Monday? Thanks.
Okay, um, I have Rayner Shonback, which is a first renewal, Five Forty-Five Sagaponic Road, Village of Sagaponic. Um, this was a project by Interscience. Most of you are, um, all of you, except for Eric, are familiar with this project. This is for a bridge to constr, to be constructed over two adjacent properties that are owned by the same homeowner.
Yes.
This was one of Bruce's projects that I've taken over. Um, there are no changes to it. Um, if you have any questions, Eric, we will do the best we can to answer them.
Okay.
We worked.
It's not a navigable waterway. You don't have to worry about height or anything, just have to worry about impeding water flow, that's all.
No, no. No.
No, it's a dr, it's a drain.
Right, and it doesn't, and we worked through it extensively, right, James? We went back and forth a bunch on this.
And he's got engineering plans with that that's gonna, gonna indemnize on, somebody.
The bridge part of it.
Bridge, rights?
Yeah, I mean, that was all handled by the town attorney's office, you know, so I mean, there's no changes to this plan, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Is that far in the application or is something that's gonna be submitted on?
This is a, a renewal.
It's a, it's a resolved.
It's already done. This is just a, a renewal.
Okay.
So I'd like to recommend it's moving ahead.
Rich, when, whenever we approve a permit with a, uh, bridge or a travel lift, we ask for certified, uh, engineered plans to be given, so that weight, load bearing, and safety and everything. So it's, it's a lot taken into consideration.
Yeah, protects us because we issued the permit, it's not, that's logical, yeah.
Yes.
You must have had some good legal advice with this.
Yes, well, we've, we've dealt with a few bridges.
And this is a renewal process, because they have to get all the permits from the other authorities, so if it doesn't happen in the time, they can renew ours, as long as nothing's changed.
Right. Right. Thank you. Okay, Scott.
Okay, I've got a, a lot. Yeah, I got a, I got a lot. Um, yeah. Craciola Family Irrevocable Trust, Eight Shinnecock Road, this is, I don't know, let's see, Gina. This is a seventy-five foot bulkhead in place of existing, twelve inches higher to match neighbor to the south. Backfill property, twenty-five cubic yards filled trucked in from upland source. Four by seventy-five untreated boardwalk landwear to the reconstructed boardwalk to install an additional six-foot wide stone non-turf buffer area, which shall have decorative native plantings with stone beds. Four by six platform leading to a three by twelve ramp and a six by twenty float secured by two ten-inch pilings, all material untreated. This is in, uh, the canals of Shinnecock Shores. James and I went out and meets the blue book, it's a highly constrained area.
What is the bulkhead north of that? Is it the same height?
We're gonna match the bulkhead, um.
On one side, but what's the other side?
It's opposite.
Yeah. One's twenty-seven higher, one's twelve higher, so we're only going to the twelve.
Okay, okay.
Shinnecock Shores is, everything is hodgepodge, the whole place is, is a hodgepodge. So we're going to the lowest that we possibly can, the other one's way higher, and you see that there a lot. So I, you know.
Two questions. Um, we have attempted on some applications, um, to propose reducing the extent of the walkway along the bulkhead, so that at, additional buffer would be permitted, so that there'd be buffer right down to the bulkhead, and we've also hoped to discourage stones in favor of vegetate, natural vegetated plantings, which would absorb more of the nutrients that are running off the lawn. Had you discussed that at all?
Well, what I would say is that this is a unique community, Shinnecock Shores, uh, highly constrained. Um, I think that the best thing we could hope for in Shinnecock Shores is to hold them strictly to blue book standards. Uh, I think that would be a terrific thing, if we could stay at blue book standards. Um, I think if you start to push beyond blue book standards, I, I, I think you create, you know, you create problem. I think that, um, I mean, just, you've been there, you go through the whole place, it's just, it's a hodgepodge.
Scott, what is, what is in the ten-foot area? A four-foot wide?
Yeah, you just wanna have a.
Walkway with stones in order to.
Yeah, they wanna do six-foot wide non-turf buffer, um, they wanna do stone beds, they wanna do some plantings, and they wanna have a.
So there, there are gonna be plantings.
There are plantings, there is stone, and they, you know, everybody there's got a walkway, you know, it's, it's a tough situation, especially when the blue book isn't calling for what you're asking for, so now they're gonna come back, and then everybody's pointing fingers at everybody else, and I think if you have blue book standards, you gotta stick to your blue book standards, or change your blue book standards. But everybody's gotta play by the same rules, and like I said, I'm very pleased when I see people respecting the blue book rules and regulations. They exist for a reason. Um, you know, people come to get permits, um, this is what you have to do. Meet the standards, you get a permit, you know, if you keep changing the rules on them, I, 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 especially in such a highly constrained area, I think that's gonna become a big problem. I, I've seen this, I've seen this. So, I mean, I would say if it meets the blue book, we should issue the.
It's better than what's there right now, much better.
Way better, way better than what's there. We're being as mindful as we can on the elevation change. I mean, that whole area, there's elevation changes all over the place. It's not the type of place where you're gonna be doing a living shoreline. The houses are very close to the water. Uh, some of them are elevated, you know, quite high, some of them are not, some of them have a pool, some of them don't have a pool. You gotta kinda handle Shinnecock Shores in a certain way, and, um, I think this is a good project at the end of the decade.
Okay, making those suggestions, and hopefully at some point we'll get to work with making those changes to the blue book as well.
Yeah. Well. Well. Yeah, it, it's like little changes at times and practicality, and, um, it's a highly constrained neighborhood. And, you know, understanding the dynamics of that neighborhood and seeing what's going on. When you take a look at this project, this is a good project for, for what's going on there.
So you wanna move it ahead then?
I, I would move this ahead.
Alright.
Okay. Next one we have is Eight Sunset Avenue, Marison Andrew Rosenberg.
You can come up. Yeah, I think you have two.
Okay.
Alright. Hi, we got a hundred. Got a hundred and twenty-foot bulkhead, twelve-inch increase in elevation, rip out and replace in qu, in kind. Six-foot southern return to sixteen northern. Uh, you gotta propose ten by sixteen deck.
Yes.
Right, and then you got a, a ten-foot gravel buffer over filter fabric landwear of the bulkhead. Fifteen cubic yards of clean fill-up land source, all material to be non-treated, tropical timbers, vinyl sheathing, and galvanized hardware.
Yes.
James and I were there.
Hello, James.
Hello.
Yeah, James can take this whole thing.
No, this is the next one.
Eight Sunset.
Yep, so once again, I'm looking at, uh, proposed ten-foot gravel buffer and, um, advocating for the use of native vegetation rather than gravel, because the decrease in the runoff due to the absorption of the roots, um, of, of nutrients by the roots is, uh, will be helpful, and, uh, anything would be better than the lawn right up to the bulkhead, which it is now, but the gravel really doesn't do anything to help decrease the runoff or the nutrient absorption. So I would be totally advocating for.
Well, it does push, you know, any fertilization or mowing further back, and it does allow for, you know, anything that is gonna be running off of the property to not go into the water.
Into the water, correct.
Right, so it does help by doing that, because you do have grass right up to that bulkhead right now, so that is gonna be, that should maybe stop.
Yes.
Or do you want to put that vegetation?
That bulkhead to fertilize vegetation?
Yeah, it's like ten foot.
That's what the code requires, ten foot back to the fertilization part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, ten foot.
You're saying, you're saying you want new vegetation plants?
Which is what we were applying for.
Native vegetation, yeah.
Yeah, let's be sure.
Well, native vegetation is better, because if you put rocks there, then you get weeds in them, and people spraying weed killer on it. Not so apt to spray weed killer on a native planting that we put.
Cape American beach grass and work over there, if you're looking for a salt tolerant material. And it does, uh, it actually does a couple things. The first thing it does is, would have a nice root system, so if it gets a, a severe storm and over top, it would usually blast through the wave energy. Um, another thing, it does absorb the nutrients off the lawn, and it's a very good, uh, you know, for geese and, uh, waterfowl, uh, you know, disturb, uh, deterrence for them to climb the property. I, I recommend it to a lot of people that have shorefront properties, because they have geese problems, and they put the grass there, and they don't, the geese don't like the grass moving between the water and them. So it does work, but, you know, it's, it's just a suggestion.
Well, put some kind of planting plant, bacillus, beach grass, or any kind of thing?
Well, the adjoining property owner has fragmites and other stuff, and it's pretty much natural, so it, it would be good to have something here more of a, not just a plain old stone pad put down, but some natural species that are salt tolerant, and and it would be good for the environment and all around.
If you propose this to the homeowner and educate them about the, the benefits to water quality by the absorption of the nutrients that are coming off the lawn, that, that sometimes.
We're, we're familiar with the plantings. We, we, we recommended that first as one option. Um. Um, but he wanted me to move forward with the gravel buffer, because it was a non-vegetative buffer that he was requesting, he chose for me to move forward with, with the gravel. So, I take your recommendations, and I can bring it back to him, but initially, we did, we also recommended plantings as well, that was his decision.
But you see the concern with the gravel?
I'm sorry?
You see this concern with the gravel?
Of course I do, I, 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 I see all the sides, and I, I understand each, that's just his recommenda- that is what he wanted to move forward with, and I'm his agent, so, I had to present it.
You can also educate him a little bit that we, uh, uh, worked with the governor on the biggest shellfish restoration project in Southampton Town, planting thirty-five million clams and, uh, oysters in this area because of the compromised water quality, so we're doing our part, so we would really encourage the homeowners to step up and do their part.
Of course. Of course.
You know, you can go online and the governor-
I'm familiar with him.
Yeah.
I've already seen what you have going on, so, I'm familiar with it.
So, yeah, I think the key is you need a practical balance.
Okay.
Okay?
Would plantings and gravel be acceptable?
You know, if you're gonna have a boat, you know, you, people are gonna wanna go crabbing and fishing along the-
Gravel path on your boat.
Okay.
Yeah, gravel path.
There's some practical balance where you have some vegetation, some stone, like other applications that we've had, where, you know, people wanna use the waterfront too, without getting ticks from the vegetation, and you, you know, we get it, but I guess the balance is-
What, what type of bulkhead, are they gonna use corrugated plastic?
Vinyl sheathing, correct.
Yeah, so it's corrugated, so you're probably gonna put up like an eighteen-inch cap, so you can walk up and down that bulkhead and go crabbing and fishing, it's not a fishing still.
Yes, it's on the- Well, he already has his, uh, there's a floating dock there, I believe, already, that he would use-
As far as the waterfront being able to access.
I think the nice wide capping is good, because then you can get out on the wide capping.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make your, you know, design something, and everybody's happy.
Yeah.
And a path to that, so you can access the dock?
Yeah, you put gravel down, yeah.
Yeah.
And what about the deck? The proposed deck that's on there?
There's a deck right in-
It's got a deck on there?
Yeah.
Is it ten by sixteen deck?
Yeah. You can use clam shells, two crushed clam shells.
Oh, yeah, right in the middle, right by the dock.
Yeah.
Oh, so you can- That's fine.
That's fine, okay, just asking, that was another concern of his, so I think maybe if we allow him that deck, he'll be thrilled with that, and then we can discuss the buffer.
Well, you know, he has a boat.
He, he really just wants to-
That's practical balance.
Right, so I think that would be fair.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they have a boat, they, you know, they're probably out fishing, and they want clean water, you know, clean, so, this, they're gonna be helping with that.
Yes. Okay, so he can do a mix of the gravel and grass plantings?
Design something.
Design something and put it back in that buffer area?
Buffer, vegetated, as much as possible would be great.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Would be much more beneficial.
Okay.
Well, this stuff's gotta go back in there, right? So, we're holding that, right?
Yes.
The deck is okay, gravel area with native vegetation.
Do you, you ready for the next one?
Okay, thank you.
We got Barry and Eugene Levy, thirty-three Miniola Court, Hampton Bays. Reface a hundred and seventeen feet of existing bulkhead, including nine foot southerly return, place approximately sixty cubic yards of cleanup landfill landward of the bulkhead, all timber to be used will be non-treated southern yellow pine, tongue and groove sheathing, and four by four support clamps on hardware, all hardware to be galvanized, no increase in elevation for the bulkhead reface.
What is he using for the reface?
Untreated southern yellow pine.
Tongue and groove, southern yellow pine.
Can I see the, uh, so what's gotta happen here is that this is, um, you gotta go back to the original line, the original bulkhead line? In this, for this property, 'cause this would be...
I think that would be-
And when you look at this, when you look at the plans, when I was there, I took a, a rough measurement off of that retaining wall, and it hits, I think, somewhere around seven and a half feet from that wood retaining wall, you know, seaward to that wood retaining wall, somewhere around seven and a half.
The tim- the, uh-
There's an older bulkhead behind the current bulkhead, you just have to come back to that bulkhead, to that original bulkhead.
Gotta go back to the original bulkhead, which is somewhere around seven and a half feet.
The pier line of the original bulkhead. We, when you issue a bulkhead permit, we will issue a second bulkhead permit, but when you go to do a third, you have to pull it back to the original pier.
Pull, pull it back, and then to the original wall, and then reface.
Well, yeah.
Then, then it starts again, yeah.
Yeah, but can you reface the original one? This might be beat up.
I don't know what that even looks like at this point.
It looked pretty beat up, but I took the, we took the measurements, I was there, and it's somewhere around seven and a half feet from that retaining wall that's there, seaward.
Okay.
So, you go there and take a look at it.
Seaward from the timber, that wall.
It's roughly seven and a half.
And there's original bulkhead underneath.
You'll see the original bulkhead, so you gotta go back to the original bulkhead line, ask for the blue book regulations.
Yeah, I think over here.
You're taking no elevation change, so-
No.
This is the original-
It's gotta be done.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so let's go over this real quick.
If this isn't a-
Retaining wall and the bulkhead.
Yeah, that's the-
They're gonna take all of that out, put new whalers in, new dead men and everything?
Yeah.
And he's gonna use untreated southern yellow pine.
Well, we did, we did.
That's what you're saying.
Permitted the homeowner, don't you remember?
That's a lot of money, a lot of work to put in untreated wood.
That's, if I, if a rip out and replacement in kind would be another option, correct?
Yes.
Because it's already been refaced twice, going for a third, and then whatever damage I would do, no?
You can't go for a third.
Right, I can't go for a third, but-
It's gotta go back to the original line.
To the original line.
What are you thinking about, using Shore Guard or something else?
Now that I realize that, I don't know what the condition is of the bulkhead behind what we're going to be taking apart, so what I'm saying is, I don't know what lies behind.
You see, the, the issue is that you have, you, you, like I said, you're seven and a half feet to that retaining wall.
Right.
So, you can't, you can't run the risk, you know, it, it's, it's a bit of a difficult task that you have there, you need, we fully can permit this thing. You know, you're not changing elevations, you're gonna go back to the original line, yeah, it's just that-
But what happens if, when we pull away the, the refaced wall, the second wall? I don't know what I'm getting into, would it be?
I guess-
Better to rip out and replace?
Inside, I think, probably, I think it's okay, I think seven and a half feet, I think you can do it.
That's okay. That's okay. Now, the regulations are that you're allowed to go eighteen, eighteen inches out from an existing old bulkhead, and then you're allowed one reface, and then after that, then you have to pull it back to the original.
Okay. Right.
So, you don't wanna keep on going eighteen inches out into the bay, right? But if you're gonna do on inside, then that's, that's usually okay, it was the outside.
Well, we, we felt it was okay if he went back to the original line when we were there, right? That's what we felt, that it was fine, this whole project was fine, just go back to the original line, and our rough measurements when we were there was roughly seven and a half feet from the retaining wall.
Seaward.
Coming seaward, exactly, so if you could do that, it fully complies with everything that needs to be done here, and-
Okay, alright, so I have to go back?
It's up to the board, you know.
You gotta price out-
That's a mess.
You gotta price out white oak or something like that instead of southern yellow pine. I mean, untreated, that's the last number.
I mean, who's decide, who, who decided the specs, I mean, you recommending the specs, is there somebody else recommending the materials, you know, what's driving it?
No, we did, and the customer just, he, we offered the vinyl sheathing at first, he just wanted to budget and keep it low, cost low.
Okay.
So, that's why we approached it with the southern yellow pine, because it was cheaper than the other product.
How long has it been on the house for?
He's been there a long time, but as of right now, um, I'm speaking with his son about everything, he's not in, uh, good medical condition.
I mean, the, the stairs that are going, you know, back up towards the property, which is obviously pushing up out of our jurisdiction, I mean, they're in really bad shape.
They wanted to replace those, and I wanted to, I didn't know at this, what, what happened to the homeowner, I couldn't speak with the homeowner, so, I'm currently going through his son right now, and the son wanted, and the wife, Barry, wanted to replace those steps, because they're in such poor condition. Um, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to add that on right now, because they didn't know
Well-
the condition of what was going on with him, so they didn't wanna make any moves.
Yeah, well, they-
I would like to replace them.
They probably push out of our jurisdiction?
Yeah.
So, if they can replace it, that's okay, I would, I would hope that would be okay.
It's, it's not, you know.
I think it's an off, I don't think it's an on.
No, I think it, it goes up out of ours, you know, 'cause there's a retaining wall, and then further back.
Keep it separate, right?
Right, okay, so, okay, so I don't have to have anything like that?
No, just the recommendation, 'cause we were there.
Right, no, we, we want to, and she wanted me, they, he had, they brought all of this up after we, I submitted everything, so it was like-
What does the board wanna do with this? You wanna hold this? What do you wanna do with this?
I'm okay if they put it, if they reface it in the back of the whalers there.
Okay.
The whole, the whole reason the DUC is not in favor is, is because people are trying to do a land grab, and being that we're the property owner, landward of that bulkhead, i- if they put anything landward of the bulkhead that's there now, it's not gonna be a land grab, it's gonna be, you know, and, and are they gonna, are you gonna leave the tongue and groove, uh, treated lumber that's there now and just go in between, or are you gonna completely redo the whole bulkhead?
You're probably gonna just nail it right onto the existing stuff.
We were, and then we were going to add a lower and upper clamp to support that.
So, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a bulkhead that's there now presently, you're gonna leave that, you're gonna put a bulkhead or a material behind it to fill in the holes that, where the tongue and groove go together.
Originally, we were gonna go up front, but now that we can't because of the-
But you're going in back.
Right, that's one I would have to propose.
Really big job to go in front.
Right, that'd be too much.
Files out and all that, you're better off to put it behind it, nail it to the existing, uh, sheathing that's there, if you get some solid spots, clamp it, put a whaler, sandwich it in, top and bottom.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
And I guess he's just, they're just doing a patch up on this thing, basically, that's why they're going with the cheaper material.
Okay.
And I would definitely have put, uh, have filter cloth between the two, uh,
Yeah, that's the best way to go.
So, that way no small stuff would get through.
No sediment. Go through, got it.
Right.
Okay?
And you don't have to have as deep a penetration either on that.
Okay. Not as many sheets.
It's a shame we do all that work and not doing the, you know, not doing the other product, not doing the Shore Guard product after you're doing all this work over there.
I can't change somebody's mon- their wallet.
Hundred and seventeen, it's a hundred, a hundred and seventeen feet.
Hundred and seventeen feet.
Yeah.
Right, originally, we wanted to rip out and replace, um, he didn't, you know.
That's pretty coincidental.
But it's something, it's something that I will now discuss with, with the homeowner and her son, and see how they wanna proceed, and if this option works for them, I'll have everything adjusted and re-stipished.
Alright, so, so then we're gonna hold this then, right?
Please, thank you.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that's a good conversation with your client. Alright, all this paperwork back here.
Okay, thank you so much for your recommendations, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, I got Michael and Sheila Trachtenberg, thirteen Romana Drive. Move existing bulkhead structure, reconstruct a new bulkhead in place, as per the approved attached plans, using all non-treated materials with no height increase. In addition, a non-fertilized, non-disturbance setback of ten foot shall be employed with natural vegetation only. The total linear feet measures a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and sixty feet. Alright, so this is no increase and a, and a buffer. Here's the gentleman who can answer your questions.
Yeah, let me preempt this by saying that I'm profoundly deaf, um, I'm reduced to reading lips, I've had a cochlear implant, uh, take place in the last month. It's in training, takes about four or five months to make that happen, so if I have to approach you and say I wanted you to say that again, you'll understand, okay?
No problem.
Just need to state your name for the record, sir?
Yeah, my name is David Lee Radekin, uh, I have a company called Point East Real Property Services, and I'm agent for the homeowner.
So, it fits the blue book now?
Yeah.
Fits the blue book, not raising elevation, he's put in a vegetative buffer in, it needs to be changed, it's in bad shape, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't let him do a project.
Yeah, that's good. Do you have any pictures?
Uh, yeah, we did have pictures. Yeah, here, thank you, there you go.
It's worn and aging bulkhead at the moment.
It's really bad. It'd be a good project.
Are you having no pictures for the file?
It's not, uh, in here.
There should be some in there.
It was attached to the application on the GIS system.
It's not, it's not in here, so, some reason-
She has a copy in there, or?
Yeah, and I said, not here.
Okay.
But if-
There's some-
He meets the blue, I mean, it meets the blue book, he's not, it's total compliant, and it's really a need, okay?
Alright, alright.
He really needs it. Yep, this one I would advance.
Okay.
Okay.
Trachtenberg, we're advancing?
Yes.
Advance it.
Okay, thank you for that, thanks, thank you so much.
Next one, next one, I have Michael Deguardi, thirty-three Shinnecock Road, East Quogue. Uh, this is one that's, uh, coming into compliance, they're removing, um, all treated lumber on the cap of the bulkhead, and removing the current stairs to the beach, replacing bulkhead capping with sixteen by seventy-five of non-treated lumber, and rebuilding the stairs, um, in the same location with non-treated lumber, um.
A little back, so at the back, the Bay House was wanting to do inspection on an old permit, uh, they, they wrote a inspection that said that the capping was all treated lumber, and the stairs were not there.
Disrepair.
Disrepair, um, so he's applying to redo the capping with non-treated lumber, and, uh, the stairs with non-treated lumber are off.
Uh, just for the record, Joseph Savio, uh, working with Eugene, uh, Joseph Giamalvo for the homeowner, Michael Deguardi.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's a vacant property, vacant, vacant parcel, so, if you can see from the pictures, it's basically just a recap, and making sure that the stairs are replaced with something that is going to be usable.
Can I make a suggestion that the stairs be retractable for the winter months, so you can pull them up and put them on the property, or hinge them?
Hinge them.
Is that area, you get a lot of northeasters and southeasters in the wintertime?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, they'll probably end up breaking off, and, uh, you'll have to replace them again.
And go find them somewhere down the block.
You won't find it.
Okay, so retract, you wanted to, you can flip it over?
Yeah, you can make, you can make them out of aluminum, and put a hinge on, you can flip them up on the property, and whenever you need to use it, you just flip them down. They've done it along Shinnecock Hills and several, the properties there, and the stairs are out of harm's way all winter, and when the summer season comes along, they just drop them down, and they're able to use them.
Great suggestion, thank you, all of you, high consideration, and I'll let the, um, homeowner know.
Wood deck?
Next door?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Says it's a wood deck.
Parnick Point.
There's a deck, it's on application, so it's not any-
Gate, you're talking about the gate.
No gate. No gate.
Is it, the fence goes all the way down?
There, there is a neighbor's fence that, um, is falling down, which is not part of this property, on the northern side, and then-
Shinnecock shores.
On the southern side, there is a fence which is also the neighbor's, which you can see from-
No, but it's in from here, Shinnecock shores.
Approach, may I approach?
Yeah, yeah, we're not like Dutch U V.
Okay, well, this is the, this is a neighbor's.
So, this one over here, you're gonna have to go to the homeowner here and have them put a gate in here, 'cause there's supposed to be a gate here.
Yeah, you have to repass.
Yeah.
Cause the fence goes down, it's not a gate.
Or we just have them to maybe move it, move it back to the whole piece.
Move it back.
Yeah, yeah. There's a, there's a five-foot passing way where you do, yeah, that's what we asked for. It's on the permit when we issue it.
Okay.
Exactly.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyway, he's, she's coming into compliance, it was not com-
Good, very good.
You good?
Okay, yep.
Okay, so we'll advance.
Will you go in some more?
Yes.
Thanks, thank you, board, I know you usually try and hold to three, but I had five today, so, apologize for that.
That concludes the general permit applications, anybody else to bring up, or we wanna wait till the regular meeting?
I think whatever we should discuss, I mean, whatever I wanna discuss, I'll bring up at the regular meeting, with more generalized stuff.
I just have one, one quick thing, um, got a letter from one of the homeowners on Gabbert Road, Widow Gabbert Road, um, the, Rich Frank's head of our maintenance, who runs our maintenance department, is taking care of it, he's, he went down there, appears the problem, and soon as the weather gets better, he's gonna try to fix it. I would like his once a week report put into our minutes, 'cause people always say what the maintenance guys do, so people can look up, and, um, they can see what the maintenance department can do. Do you think we can do that, Lisa?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
That sounds good.
So, once a week?
Yeah, yeah.
Whenever he submits his report.
Whenever he submits, put it in the minutes.
Report, um-
Cause he usually does a monthly report, so when, if you wanna change it to maybe-
Oh, do it monthly. No, you do it monthly.
Do it monthly, do that monthly?
Whenever, whenever he submits the report.
Yeah, whatever he submits it.
So, anybody that has any complaints, he so waves.
He always makes a nice report, so we can feed it right into the minutes, it's gonna-
Oh, okay, so maybe add it to the minutes?
Yeah, just add it to the minutes.
He spends the time making a nice report.
And this is, this was Bruce's area that Billy was talking about, I had handled it originally, uh, with Mariah way back in fifteen. Uh, John, I asked John Simler for some of the back information, there's a whole folder full of information that I did a review on, so, I hope you don't mind that I, you know,
No, 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 no. Happy to, uh-
I sent you all an email.
Yeah, and I took it out of it.
Yeah, I took it out of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just addressed the board about the move. I think I, uh, sent you all an email last night that the move has been moved forward to February seventeenth. Town hall's closed that day, which is better, so hopefully the next day when we come in, everything will be set up in the auditorium. The trustees will be across the hall from you, the board will have, um, a place across the hall from the clerk's office. That's what I've been told by Christine Fenton, I said yesterday. So I should have a seating chart very soon, as soon as I have it, I will, uh, share it with the board.
And what's the estimate of time that we're gonna be there?
Uh, I believe four to six weeks.
Okay, four to a half.
Yeah.
Due to renovations to the town hall?
Yes.
Altered things.
What are we getting out of here? Going back upstairs?
It's delayed. Um, it's been delayed, we're supposed to be now, I think we're here at least until the end of March. They're having problems with the air quality upstairs for C T V.
Gonna have to get new seats.
Yes.
Out of hot air? Okay.
Cheap joke.
Yeah, I had to put that in there, go ahead.
We could retract that, a couple of quick things. C T V has a YouTube channel, so if you are curious about that, you can check it out. You can watch our meetings and all other meetings on it as well. Um, it's a great new addition that they've started. Um, and just a mention, uh, tomorrow evening, Thursday evening in East Hampton, there's a film called Oysters, um, that is about an Australian family who are oyster farmers and it's being held at the East Hampton Movie Theater. So I just wanted to let anybody know that might be interested.
How about you, Scott, you have anything right now?
No, I know we're anxious to go into executive session, so I don't wanna take any more of the boards time, I think we're gonna get to business, so.
Yeah, we can make all the reports at the general meeting.
Monday meeting.
Okay, alright, so I like the motion to, uh, close the hearing and then go into executive session to discuss legal issues.
I'm sorry, bulkhead issues?
Legal issues.
Oh, okay.
Litigation.
Litigation.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay. Closed.